Good evening. Welcome everyone to the Hermiston City Council meeting for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a declaration of a quorum. We're going to excuse councilors Jackie Myers and Jackie Linton. Please join me in the flag loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, even if it is all for liberty and justice for all.
And we have Mr. Morgan filling in this evening. Welcome, Assistant City Manager Morgan. Any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. So this is the first opportunity for citizen input. Those of you that would like to speak to the city council on items not on our agenda this evening, we'll have opportunities later in the agenda to speak to those, but if you would like to speak to the city council about anything not on our agenda, please come up to the microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address. Limit your comments to less than five minutes and direct them to me. No takers. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Any items need to be pulled by the council? All right, any public comment on consent agenda items? Seeing none? Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C as presented?
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Councilor Primmer, seconded by Councilor McCarthy, that we approve the consent agenda as presented, A, B, and C. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. I do have to apologize tonight. I have something going on with my ears, so if I don't hear something, you might, it wasn't that I was ignoring you, you might have to just speak up a little louder.
Oh, we have permission to yell?
Okay.
What was that? Use your microphones. All right, so we are at public hearings. A exemption from public contract and competitive bidding requirement, design, build services signage, various locations has been postponed to the city council meeting for October fourteenth.
Correct.
Okay, no conversation or discussion for that this evening. So we're gonna move on to annexation for Zumudio four N two eight zero two B C, tax lot fifteen hundred, three oh nine East Theater Lane, ordinance number two three six six. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest from the council? All right, seeing none. Hearing guidelines will now be presented by the city staff. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. The city council is holding a hearing to consider a request for annexation to the city of Hermiston. The city council will consider the request and make a decision based on the criteria established in one five zero zero five of the Hermiston Code of Ordinances. The applicant wishes to annex approximately one point five acres located at three oh nine West Theater Lane, it should be East Theater Lane. The applicant is Melinda Zumudio. The applicable substantive criteria relied upon by the city in rendering the decision to annex the property are contained in one five zero zero five of the Hermiston Code of Ordinances. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations which the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue by the close of the record at or following the hearing in person or by letter precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the decision maker in the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to Luba based on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The city council shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing pursuant to O R S one ninety-seven seven six three six B or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony pursuant to O R S one ninety-seven seven six three six C. For this hearing, the process begins with the staff report, followed by testimony from the applicants and any other supporters of the application. This will be followed by opponents to the application. Finally, rebuttal by the applicant will be allowed. The public hearing portion of the procedure will then be closed and the city council will consider the information and testimony received, adopt findings of fact, and render a decision on annexation.
Okay, we'll now open the hearing. City staff will now present its report. Mr. Spencer?
Tonight, the city council is holding a public hearing to consider a request for annexation from Melinda Zumudio for a one point five acre section of land that's located at three oh nine East Theater Lane. That's about four hundred feet west of Northeast Fourth Street and about fifty feet east of the intersection with Northeast Second Street. This property is within the urban portion of our urban growth boundary and adjacent to city limits on the south and west property lines. And the applicant wishes to annex the property to the city in order to receive sewer and water services which are available in East Theater Lane to enable further residential development. The application is proposing annexation with an R three zoning designation. That's our medium-high-density residential. This property currently abuts existing R three land to the east and north and is generally in a mixed-use neighborhood which has commercial development to the west. It has single-family and manufactured dwellings to the south and multifamily and single-family to the east, so it's very mixed-use neighborhood. The property was partitioned into three lots in July of this year and prior to constructing any property, any dwellings on this, annexation would be required. As you know, when property is within three hundred feet of a city sewer line, you're no longer allowed to use a septic field and you must tie onto any available sewer which is available. And in this case, property, the sewer is directly adjacent, so annexation is required because the city will not extend extraterritorially any sewer water services. The, the Planning Commission held a public hearing back on September eleventh of this month and at, at the closure of that hearing made a unanimous recommendation that the property be annexed as R three as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spencer. We're now gonna open it up for public testimony, so if there are individuals that would like to speak to this issue, I'm gonna ask them to come up to the microphone up front, introduce themselves by name and address, limit your testimony to less than five minutes. We'll start with proponents who wish to speak, people in favor of this. All right, any neutral parties? Any opponents that would like to speak? Okay, we're gonna close the hearing. City staff will now present its findings of fact.
In Exhibit A to your staff report, there are two pages of findings which basically detail the procedural issues as well as demonstrate compliance with the statewide requirements for annexation and be happy to answer any questions on those findings.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. The only question I have is that little tiny sliver to the east. Is that because property nine hundred is landlocked? If it's not?
It is, that property to the east is a flag lot which dates way back to, oh man, it, I remember when that happened in the county in the very late nineties, right after Steve and I both started here. And that lot was partitioned off from the one that you see, which is basically a T shape. And it is a flag lot that has a twenty-five-foot flag that comes all the way down to Theater Lane and to service the house that's in the back, but it's all part of that lot to make sure it does not stay landlocked.
So that property will still be in the county?
That's correct.
We have some unique borders. Yeah. Any other questions? From the council? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the findings of fact?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Councilor Primmer, seconded by Councilor Harden, that we approve the motions or the findings of fact as presented. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. And there is a condition on this, is that right? Or conditions?
Sorry about that. Yes, those conditions basically came from the partitioning and are carrying over as conditions of annexation as well, just detailing groundwater pollution hazards as well as the fact that Theater Lane is a city street and, but is not currently up to city standards, and so any development will trigger improvements to Theater Lane.
Got you. Okay. Can I get a motion to impose conditions of approval?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Councilor Primmer, seconded by Councilor Barone, that we approve the motions or the, the motions or the impose the conditions of approval. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We will bring this back at ordinance number twenty-three sixty-six for final action, which is up next.
Next.
All right. So Assistant City Manager Morgan, ordinance number two three six six, annexation of Zumudio four N two eight zero two B C, tax lot fifteen hundred, three oh nine East Theater Lane.
Yes, this is the issue that you just heard about.
Okay, nice and concise. Any other council comments? Okay, is there any other public comment about ordinance number two three six six? Okay, may I request first reading the ordinance be read by title only? Calls for a roll call, roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Tubby?
First reading by title only of ordinance number two three six six, an ordinance annexing certain real property on East Theater Lane, describing said real property withdrawing said real property from special districts and designating zoning. Mr. Mayor?
May I request that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and that second reading be by title only and calls for a roll call, roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Tubby?
Second reading by title only of ordinance number two three six six, an ordinance annexing certain real property on East Theater Lane, describing said real property withdrawing said real property from special districts and designating zoning. Mr. Mayor?
Can I get a motion that ordinance number two three six six be adopted and become effective thirty days after adoption by the city council?
So moved, second.
Then moved by Mr. McCarthy, Councilor McCarthy, seconded by Councilor Primmer.
Nope, Harden.
Councilor Harden, sorry. You ever know, like, when your ears don't work, your brain, your mind doesn't work, your mouth doesn't work? I don't know. Never experienced that?
Not gonna see.
I hope you never do that. So it's been
There's an opportunity for a joke here.
Councilor McCarthy, seconded by Councilor Harden, that ordinance number two three six six be adopted and become effective thirty days after adoption by the city council. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. On to Resolution two three three eight, Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone School Support Fee. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with the council, this evening, we're gonna be discussing Resolution twenty-three thirty-eight, which is a setting a rate for a school support fee for the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone. Ultimately, we're talking about establishing a fifteen percent school support fee. This is specific for the long-term rural enterprise zone. Ultimately, it's a four-way agreement between the city of Hermiston, Yumattila County, the Hermiston School District, and the Stanfield School District. Little bit of an overview for folks in the audience and watching online. The Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone, what it is, it's a area for property tax exemption that generally includes the areas within and immediately surrounding the city of Hermiston. It's a property tax incentive that's mainly for the purposes of incentivizing job creation. The co-sponsors of the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone are the city of Hermiston and Yumattila County. And city of Hermiston staff acts as the administrative staff for the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone. To give you a sense of the area that we're talking about here, we now have a fancy green cursor that you can hopefully see better than the laser pointer, and also hopefully that folks can see it online now as well. So you can see the, the red outline there, that's the urban growth boundary. These areas up in here are the city limits. The highlighted areas are the enterprise zone itself. So you can see down here, there's a significant amount of area that's outside of the both city limits and the urban growth boundary as well, so that gives you a sense of the area. Generally speaking, for enterprise zones, this is a program that's gotten significantly more complex over the years. But at its core, there's still three main components to the enterprise zone program. There's a three-year basic exemption, a five-year extended exemption, and the long-term rural enterprise zone exemption program which allows for exemptions between six and fifteen years. The basic three-year exemption, one important thing to keep in mind is that's actually something that's actually guaranteed by right for certain industrial developments. As long as they, they'll receive a full property tax exemption, as long as they create one job or increase employment by at least ten percent if they're an existing employer within the zone. Some examples of employers that have used the three-year exemption in the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone are Shears Foods back in two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen, and Eastern Oregon Telecom back in two thousand and sixteen. Additionally, then, the extended five-year program, same job requirements as the three-year exemption, which is one additional job or increasing employment by ten percent, but the extended program requires that the average of all of the new jobs, the average salary must be at least equal to the countywide average wage. And then the average compensation, so including things like deferred compensation and some of those other expenses, that has to total at least a hundred and thirty percent of the countywide average wage. Pioneer Seed is an example of one that's taken advantage of that in Hermiston back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and twelve. Then there's the Long-Term Rural Enterprise Zone Program, the six-to-fifteen-year exemption. Again, now the same job and pay requirements as the five-year exemptions, but this is only available for developments that are at least fifty million dollars in capital investment. But additionally, it allows for additional local requirements to be imposed by the zone sponsors, which can include a lot of things, but mainly it focuses on financial requirements. And a couple of the folks that have used this program are Lamb Weston and Amazon in the Hermiston Zone. So just a little bit of an example of how the El Tres works based on one that we've already done, so based on the Lamb Weston investment back in two thousand and seventeen. That was a two-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar investment that is fully exempt from local property tax for fifteen years. Important to keep in mind, these exemptions only apply to new investments, so all of the existing facilities, again, Lamb Weston had existed out there for many years, all of the existing facilities remain taxable as they were at the time. It only applies the exemption to new investment. But then the additional local requirements, although they pay no property tax, they're required to pay one million dollars per year to the zone for those fifteen years. When you do all of the math and run it, run it all the way out, that one million dollars per year totaling fifteen million dollars over the course of the exemption comes out to equalling about forty percent of what the company would have paid otherwise in property tax liability. So how does the enterprise zone impact schools specifically? For the most part, the enterprise zone program is considered to hold local school operations harmless. So local school operational budgets are mainly backfilled by the state education fund. So in that instance, local school districts that have a higher tax base receive a lower state subsidy in order to provide standardized educational funding across the state. So when local economic development incentives exempt new developments from local property taxes, those are considered did not actually impact the operational revenues to the local school district because, again, they're funded mainly by the state. So in the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session, the teachers' union, the statewide teachers' union became aware of a lot of these El Tres exemptions that have been taking place, and so they proposed House Bill two thousand and nine to implement what they called a school support fee. And so this only applies to the El Tres, the long-term exemption programs. And this only applies after the fifth year of exemption. So this was approved with the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session, so moving forward now for new El Tres exemptions, after that fifth year of exemption, now any business that receives the El Tres exemption has to pay at least fif- between fifteen percent and thirty percent of what the investment would have had to pay in total in local property tax as a school support fee. So it's not just fifteen percent to thirty percent of what they would have paid in school-related taxes, it's fifteen percent to thirty percent of all local taxes must be paid as a school support fee. And so that fifteen percent to thirty percent, that's ultimately what you're deciding on this evening. The legislature left that to the local enterprise zones, along with the local school districts, to determine what that local rate would be. So the school support fee ultimately will be collected by the local school district itself, so they'll receive those revenues, but then those revenues get included along with all of their local property tax revenues for purposes of calculating how much funding that local school district receives from the state by way of state subsidies. So that local school support fee generated in Hermiston really ends up backing its way out and getting spread across all of the K-12 students across Oregon, not just accruing to the local school district. So again, let's kind of think through what a realistic timeline would look like for some of these, some of this funding. Again, I mentioned it's only for new El Tres agreements, so we have several El Tres agreements that are already in place. This does not apply to any of those. I can tell you there are currently no El Tres negotiations taking place in the Hermiston Enterprise Zone. So if a new El Tres negotiation were to begin sometime in two thousand and twenty-five, based on the complexity of, you know, this scale of investment, you're looking at probably two years from the time that we begin an El Tres negotiation until you actually got a certificate of occupancy for that investment. After they receive their certificate of occupancy, it's typically about a year before it hits that first property tax year, which is the first year of exemption for the El Tres program, so you're looking at two thousand and twenty-eight. And then with the school support fee revenue not beginning to accrue to the state until that sixth year of exemption, if a new El Tres negotiation were to begin sometime in two thousand and twenty-five, the state's probably not looking at any additional school support fee revenue until probably two thousand and thirty-four or about ten years from now. So again, kind of giving you a sense, here's the Hermiston Enterprise Zone boundaries. This is mostly that same area showing the Hermiston School District boundaries. And then this white box shows the Stanfield School District boundaries. So I've talked about this with council a number of times before, but this red section highlighted there, that is the area that is inside of the Hermiston city limits and also inside of the Stanfield School District rather than the Hermiston School District. So that's the area that's inside of the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone but inside of the Stanfield School District. So that is why we had to go to both Stanfield and the Hermiston School District to work with them on identifying what they would prefer as the school support fee percentage. They have both agreed to request that it be the fifteen percent, the lower school support fee. Stanfield approved theirs in March, Hermiston approved theirs this month. And now the Hermiston City Council needs to agree with that and Yumattila County Commissioners will agree to that. Now, since this is a financial policy, I'll kind of walk you through what the hypothetical fiscal impact of the school support fee policy would have been if it was around when the Lamb Weston El Tres was negotiated in two thousand and seventeen. So again, two-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar investment, one million dollars a year paid in total, split between the county and the city. Works out to about thirty-nine percent of what their property tax liability would have been. And also, you know, again, the main thrust of the enterprise zone programs to help stimulate new jobs. It resulted in a hundred and forty-one net new jobs that generate about ten and a half million dollars a year in local wages in the local community. So for calculating industrial property tax, Yumattila County Assessor has long told me the, the rule of thumb that they use if you're trying to predict what the tax revenue is going to be from industrial investment. You generally are gonna want to take eighty percent of what the initial investment was. So whatever the initial investment was, knock that down by twenty percent, and then moving forward, that taxable value depreciates at a rate of about five percent per year. So when you're looking at a two-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar investment, by year six, that taxable value that gets the rate applied to it is probably gonna be somewhere in the range of around a hundred and eighty million dollars. So trying to figure out what that school support fee number would be, if the fifteen percent school support fee is fifteen percent of all taxes in year six through fifteen, that would generate in year six a total school support fee that the company would have to pay of approximately four hundred thousand dollars in year six, depreciating by five percent down to three hundred and ninety thousand in year seven, and then depreciating each year after that. So the total amount of school support fee that would have been sent to the statewide school fund would have been about three-point-three million dollars. So when you run that across the five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand students across the state, it would have increased funding on a per-student basis by about thirty-seven per- thirty-seven cents per student statewide for the Hermiston School District because they would have received, you know, their portion of that across fifty-five-hundred students, the Hermiston School District would have received some additional funding. Would have received about two thousand dollars per year out of a hundred and eighty-million-dollar budget. So now we gotta consider how that would have impacted the negotiation process. The best-case scenario could have been, the company may have simply accepted the added three-point-three-million-dollar cost. In that instance, the, their payments in lieu of taxes would have been about forty-eight percent instead of thirty-nine percent. So that's kind of the, the best-case scenario. They could have just accepted that, or they may have refused and negotiated part of that payment. So they could have refused that additional three-point-three-million-dollar cost. So trying to, it's always easy using hindsight to see, you know, what the, the negotiating field would have looked like. But we now know, based on news reports, looking back since two thousand and nineteen, Lamb Weston has actually made nearly identical level of capital investments and very similar process investments at their facilities just across the river in Patterson, up in the Tri-Cities and Richland, as well as at their facility in American Falls, Idaho. So that kind of tells me that, you know, as we're getting into negotiating those types of things, you know, they very well may have simply said, well, we'll go ahead and You know, they very well may have simply said, well, we'll go ahead and. Make that investment first in Patterson, then in Richland, then in American Falls, and maybe we'll invest uh, do that investment in Hermiston sometime, probably around now. Um, or they may have just simply shifted that investment entirely across server to Patterson and just trucked the potatoes across over there. So. Those are some of the things that we would have had to consider uh during that process. Now, trying to get a sense for what the total universe of negotiating options would have been. Again, option A would have been that the company could have just eaten the three and a half, three point three million dollar increase. Uh, the other option, somewhere between there, could have been that the enterprise zone ate the three point three million dollar loss. Or uh, both sides may have uh reached an impasse, and the company may have just simply chose not to invest or invested. So when we're trying to think about what that means for uh revenue to the local taxing jurisdictions as a result of this. You know, option A, they're on the right-hand side. Again, that three point three million dollars in additional funding mainly would have gone to the state. Um, so that would have resulted in zero additional funding uh to local taxing entities. Uh, option B, if the enterprise zone would have eaten that um. Increase in cost, instead of the local jurisdictions receiving fifteen million dollars over fifteen years, would have been more like twelve million. Um, or the local jurisdictions, you know, could have just completely lost all of the revenue as well as the local uh salaries that would have been generated. So. That's really the impact uh that we have to consider moving forward when we have these uh long-term real enterprise zone exemptions come forward. So uh, ultimately, the, the main takeaway is that as a result of this uh. Future El tres deals will be less financially valuable for uh the local community. Uh, the local C uh schools see real no tangible change. Uh, so the resolution before you this evening is to agree with the. Stanfield and Hermiston School Districts and choose to set that school support fee at fifteen percent for future enterprise zone exemptions. Uh, Yumitala County has not yet approved their portion. Uh, they'll probably take this up at their next meeting. With that, I'd stand for any questions?
All right, counselors, any questions?
That's the only question I have. Um, this does not impact. What we've already negotiated in the El tres agreements with school funding.
Correct.
Because we did negotiate some funding to go to locally to the Hermiston School District, right?
Yep.
But that won't be impacted going forward.
Yeah, so this only applies to new.
New El tres agreements. So will future El tres agreements have? That, well, it'll all be part of the negotiation, I suppose, whether they want to give local schools that funding instead.
Yep.
Or on top of. Yeah, yeah, that creates a challenge.
Yeah.
Because I think currently annually, they get twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so depending on. I don't know if I can go backwards. Can you go back and pull up a map that shows the school district? There we go. Yeah, so. Because we have some interesting boundaries going on here. So the. Uh, Amazon campus that's being constructed right now on Kelly because it's in the Stanfield School District. Um, there's a lot of different components to the enterprise zone uh payment structure. One of those being that they're required to pay um. An amount equal to what they would have paid on a twenty-five million dollar investment to all of the underlying jurisdictions anyway. So the Stanfield School District will receive. An amount that they would have received on a twenty-five million dollar investment. Uh, but recognizing that the vast majority of students in the West End Yumitala County attend Hermiston School District. Uh, we negotiated an additional school support fee uh that we called it the school support fee at time. Of fifty thousand dollars per year that goes to the Hermiston School District. So that is the dynamic that exists for that campus. There's another campus that will break ground located here soon. That has the same structure. So again, Stanfield School District receives revenue off of what would have been a twenty-five million dollar investment. Hermiston School District receives fifty thousand dollars per year just as a school support fee. The third exemption that has been approved by the council is a campus that will break ground here. And that is located in the Hermiston School District. And so uh, recognizing, you know. What seemed to be fair in one instance made sense in the other. In that instance, the Hermiston School District would receive funding based off of a twenty-five million dollar investment. And the Stanfield School District will receive fifty thousand dollars a year as a school support fee.
Significantly better deal than.
Yeah.
Than two thousand dollars. New two thousand dollars school support fee.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the council? Um, yeah, Councilor Brown.
Uh, I just want to get this clear. My essence, you just re-asked that question. So the current contracts that we have already signed. That's none of the revenue streams are going to be impacted.
Will not be impacted.
Correct. I, I can see this law was maybe. Created for a good purpose, but man, this does not help our local, our local schools or.
Doesn't help negotiation.
Oh. Does, does this.
Makes us less competitive as a state. Potentially.
Yep. Does that affect, I guess, compression if, if there is a new El tres agreement?
Hmm, I don't, I don't see how that would affect.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilor.
Do I have to declare a conflict of interest because I am a school district employee?
Potential conflict of interest, Mr. Tubby. I did. She's not doing it in her personal benefit.
All right. No, it, it's such a high level too that uh I, I don't see that there's even potential conflict on this.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Of the two thousand dollars that the school district's going to get. You're going to get one little tiny slice of that. Sense. All right. Any other questions from the council? Okay, any public comment on Resolution two, three, three, eight? Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution two, three, three, eight and lay it upon the record?
So moved.
Sorry.
Been moved by Councilor Primmer, seconded by Councilor Harden, that we adopt Resolution two, three, three, eight and lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Resolution two, three, three, nine, stop signs at Southeast Ninth and East Penny Avenue. Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, so this uh resolution is, as you mentioned, specific to installing and changing some stop signs at Southeast Ninth and Penny Avenue. Specifically, this will remove one new stop sign that was recently installed as part of the Southeast Ninth Street project. And replace that with two uh stop signs on uh Penny Avenue instead. So. Giving you a sense of where we're looking at here. So. Uh, this is the new section of Southeast Ninth Street that was constructed this spring. Uh, that's. Right here, also a section of Penny Avenue that was constructed at the same time. At that time, we installed a stop sign located on this leg, so stopping northbound traffic on uh. On Southeast Ninth. And so. Based on uh how traffic has been working in that vicinity, we've s- received some feedback mainly from the folks at Pioneer Seed. Um, about. They feel like the stop signs need to be changed around a little bit. Additionally, since um. Design of that street, uh, we now know much more about how uh construction will operate and how the layout, uh, the permanent uh site layout will be of the. Uh, PDX two forty-five Amazon Campus that will be constructed here. Uh, but particularly what we know is that the uh construction entrance for all construction activities and. Transitioning into the permanent entrance for that facility will come in off of Penny Avenue, uh, the west end of that new Penny Avenue extension. And so. Based on the several hundred construction uh workers per day, as well as all of the construction activity, deliveries, all of those things. Uh, we anticipate significant uh cross-traffic on Penny Avenue uh during that time. And then long-term, uh, when their operational, they will have upwards of two hundred employees on the site uh going through that intersection. And so. In consideration of that, as well as in consultation with Pioneer Seed, uh, it made sense to transition the stop signs to instead. Uh, be located to stop traffic going east-west on Penny and leave uh Southeast Ninth to be the, the through street. And so that would mirror. The current setup on Kelly Boulevard right now. Kelly is uh free north-south with stop signs for the east-west traffic. So. That's the proposal. Stand for any questions?
Sort of Pioneer Seed say that most of their guys and gals are going to be going north and south versus going around the corner like they have been?
Well, ultimately, I think we'll see their delivery trucks, their fully loaded corn trucks going to be coming in off of Feadville going north on uh Ninth. But I think their main concern is, uh, they're not super uh. Pleased with their, their neighbors' construction activities uh coming on to Penny. And so I think they're concerned about, you know, the high volume of traffic going through that intersection. So.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Any public comment on Resolution two, three, three, nine? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution two, three, three, nine laid upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor McCarthy, seconded by Councilor Primmer, that we adopt Resolution two, three, three, nine laid upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Resolution two, three, four, zero, O dot I G A, R R F B installation on O R two oh seven at Hartley and Joseph. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, so Resolution twenty-three forty is uh regarding a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. That's what R R F B stands for. There'll be a quiz later. Um, so ultimately, this uh resolution would approve the intergovernmental agreement with O dot for O dot to install. The two new flashing crosswalks on Eleventh Street at the intersections with Hartley and with Joseph. And then it commits that the city will uh pay for all of the long-term maintenance. O dot will do the actual maintenance. It would be the city then. Uh, reimbursing O dot for doing the maintenance long-term. So where we're looking at specifically, this is Eleventh Street right here. Uh, you can see the hospital right there. And so this is Hartley right there. So it would be installing a new. Uh, cross wa- uh, flashing crosswalk at that location. Uh, this is a street view looking to the south uh down Eleventh Street. There's the Eleventh Street Market, uh, the intersection with Hartley right there. Uh, so you can see there is already an existing crosswalk at that location, and this would install the uh push-button flashing uh equipment at that location. The other location uh is on the southern end of the city. This is uh again, Eleventh Street. Uh, this is Arm and RV Middle School. Um, this is Joseph right there. And this is actually uh an image from two thousand and fifteen. And so I would. Direct your attention to this area right there. So that was uh the area in two thousand and fifteen. And that's the area um from this year. So. Uh, we saw a pretty significant development uh in that vicinity around twenty sixteen timeframe. So. Uh, around a hundred housing units added right around that uh crosswalk there. So lots of uh folks um. Physically able and, and close enough to uh cross uh as pedestrians, uh, two oh seven at that location, uh, accessing the middle schools. So. Again, that's Joseph, and this is a street view looking to the north on Eleventh Street. Uh, there's Joseph Street right there. And so you can see the existing crosswalk uh already signed as a school crossing. So this would. Add the push-button equipment at that location. So some of the considerations for the agreement, uh, O dot will cover the upfront quarter million dollars to do the installation. Uh, these things are expensive to install. So, you know, folks ask for these. Flashing crosswalks, and that's roughly the cost to put two of them in. Um, so tho- that comes with a uh agreement on the city side of things that we will. Pay for the maintenance, as I mentioned. O dot's crews will actually do any maintenance. Uh, that maintenance would be capped at no more than twenty-five hundred dollars per year for each of those. Uh, I don't anticipate that we'll see much maintenance in the initial years, maybe some in later years. Uh, I think probably the, the bigger concern or the bigger consideration is. Uh, if a, one of these pieces of equipment gets taken out by a drunk driver or something like that. Uh, O dot will handle all of the effort to recoup the costs of replacing that. Uh, from their insurance or from the, the driver themselves. But if there's no insurance or some of those types of things, that cost would end up falling to the city. Uh, however, I would point out that a, a pretty significant component of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar initial installation cost. Comes in the form of doing the directional drilling underneath the, the highway and then bringing in the power and some of those other off-site. Uh, components. So I can't really foresee a, an accident where just taking out one of the signs is going to cost, you know, more than maybe ten or fifteen thousand dollars just to replace the. The vertical components of the signage. So that's the other consideration there. So. With that, I would uh recommend that you approve the I G A and uh approve O dot to install those signs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Uh, that will be our third one on Eleventh Street.
Yes, for just the flashing crosswalk.
Right. We put one in um.
In between Highland and Orchard.
Right.
Hospital.
By the hospital.
So it's our fourth.
It's our fourth. That's right. That's right. We did put one by the hospital too. Yeah, and then the one right by the.
School District.
School District Office, yeah. Um, I think those are great locations. You know, that street is just getting busier and busier. And it seems to be a thoroughfare uh for traffic and, and trucks. So um, and. Allowing kids to uh cross there. Um, I think that's great. So I'm excited to see them. Any other questions from the council?
Just makes sense.
Anyone? No. Any public comment about Resolution two, three, four, zero?
Hello, Josh Roberts, seventeen oh nine Northeast Sixth Place. Uh, more of a question, I guess. Um, I was curious, after listening to the presentation, if this is going to run concurrent with the uh. Construction that they're doing at the crosswalks, if they're going to be installing this and then having to rip it up. Or is this going to happen at the same time? Because I think that's one of the intersections, if I remember right, at Joseph and Eleventh, that they were going to redo the. Yes, the ADA access. So.
Just a question.
Just a question.
Yeah, thank you.
You want to answer that, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, so that's uh part of what triggered their uh urgency, I guess, in moving forward with this. Um, specific to the, the Joseph Crossing, actually, uh, one of the things that it will uh trigger as part of the, the ADA. Um, uh, project that they're doing is they'll actually uh be closing, technically closing. Um, the crosswalk on the northern side of that intersection. So. Joseph crosses Eleventh Street, so technically there's two uh potential options for crossing on the south side of Joseph and on the north side of Joseph. And so. As part of this and part of that project, uh, they would eliminate the ability for folks to cross on the north side. And try to channelize people to just use the push-button one on the south side. So it's not really directing people too far. Out of the way, just directing them to the south side. But there's a number of reasons why they wanted to, to do that to accommodate the ADA ramps. So.
Good to see a potential future counselor paying close attention. He's been attending a lot of meetings. Good for him. Any other comments? Any other public comments? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution two, three, four, zero?
So moved.
Definitely.
Been moved by Councilor Dron, seconded by Councilor Primmer, that we adopt Resolution two, three, four, zero and lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Onto August twenty twenty-four financial report, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, uh, Lily's telling me to wait. But uh, yes, I'll turn it over to uh Mr. Plasis.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I want to make sure I'm coming across. So we're the second month into the current fiscal year. Uh, at the end of August thirty-first, that's what I'm, the reports I'm presenting tonight. Uh, let's take a look here. So North, I'm, as far as the financial reports, per holding good and studying the, in the Hura U R A. Uh, we're still on, on track for first quarter. For the first quarter of next year. To start for the bidding for this, the North Hermiston, I've been surveying of the project area, et cetera. Any questions on the U R A? Oops. Getting carried. I want to be done. So. So um, because of the, the nature of how we project. The, the revenues and not the expenses for the year, uh, projections can, can be a good metric to indicate something, and then we look at budget to actual. Although um, current monthly revenues are four hundred and sixty-eight thousand below projections. We are right on track for budget to actual. We are two-twelfth of the way through the year, seventeen percent, and we are at seventeen percent for revenues. And this is primarily due to re- uh, to timing as comparison to the projected revenues for the current. Period ending eight thirty-one. This is too sensitive. Monthly expenses again are below projections by two hundred and forty-five thousand. This is primarily due. Uh, to um, PD not purchasing uh new ve- leasing new vehicles for, that are budgeted for the current year and upfitting associated with that and uh other. Other miscellaneous expenses throughout the year. Although when, when you look at several departments listed their transportation, airport, parks, library, Hark and Rider Center, and Public Safety Center. When you compare that to the projected um year-to-date actual, those appear to be. Over budget, but there really are only two departments that are technically over budget right now, and that's parks. This bulk of activity for the parks occurs in the spring and summer. So we have part-time helps that will help through the end of this month, maybe a couple of weeks into October. They will drop off, so that. They will drop off, so that will start to smooth out. Public Safety Center. We had unexpected repair, so that threw us a little bit over. We don't anticipate that happening, and that has been taken care of. And then with the movement from the Public Safety Center over to the ARC building, that should stay stable for the remainder of the year. Law enforcement, I just want to keep this in front of the council. Law enforcement and library special revenue funds, we, during the budget cycle, we close those, but they'll continue to be reported on because they're, that's just the way the budget cycle works. So they'll be on the budget for three years, and then they'll drop off. So for the utility and street funds, the street fund revenues were under projection strictly due to timing of the gas tax receipt. We didn't get that payment until September. So that's why that looks like it's way under budget. But it, it caught right up in September, so we're doing well on that one. Utility funds, seven, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand are projected revenues. But we had an addition of about a hundred. When compared to the same period for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, we've seen an increase of approximately a hundred homes or new connections. So we also have the annual C I P, C P I adjustment and then other charges. We had an, we have an, we had approximately an additional ninety thousand dollars for discharge water from the Amazon campus that we clean at the wastewater center. And then the regional water project is thirty-five thousand or projected expenses. This is primarily due to, again, comparison, comparing to that projected year-to-date expenditures. I think that's a good tool to give me a good starting point to see if there's something going on. At this point, it's right on track, right on budget. In fact, it's becoming, coming in below budget. It's a thirteen percent of budget for year-to-date actual in comparison to where we are for the budget cycle.
Mister Mayor?
Yes. Mister Plasios, I do have a question on actually the previous side. Just for clarification, the law enforcement, the, the library special revenue funds, are they, they're joining another fund, right?
Yeah.
Is that what's going on, right?
Blows them into the general fund. These were capturing small grant dollars for the library. So it's just as easy to track those in the general fund as well as for the law enforcement special revenue fund that has some safety and traffic and Dewey Stop type grants for overtime. The only portion is the law enforcement has some residual dollars for money that is not, does not belong to the city. And we're holding interest for either a vehicle that's been impounded or, or cash in a drug bust or something like that.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that, too. And for everybody in the audience, that these funds aren't going away. They're just being reallocated.
Yeah, we're, I like to maintain the, the minimum number of funds that I can to conduct the, the city's business. And so with this, a small activity that does have, it'd be better just to roll this into the general fund.
Thank you, Mister Plasios.
Any other questions?
David?
Just regarding the gas tax. So you mentioned that we received that this month. So I'm assuming then next month's financial report will show a significant over projections increase in revenue?
Well, it'll just catch up because it'll have three months. So
Okay.
July, August, September. Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It'll smooth out instead of looking low.
Okay.
Mister Plasios, are you done with your report?
I am. I'm going to turn it over to
Okay, I, I did have one more question. Or comment, frankly. Because I think of the wise and prudent use of our funds this last year as a council and as administration, as well as the adjustments that we made to the fees. It's good to look at the ending fund balance page and see that our projections are not going below our set minimum reserve. This is the first time in three or four years that we haven't been going below that. And so it's good to see that we're not going that direction. So good job, council. Good job, administration. Good job, community for funding that resource, too, to help step up and, and balance the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Morgan?
Yes, so capital project-wise, the Gear and Harper realignment project continues. We're still working with Union Pacific on that design. The well six coronation structure had been put on hold, and it's now moving forward again. So that's good to see. The well number four control project should be moving towards advertisement for bids here in the next couple of weeks. The Gladys Maine and Newport project, just right outside of the door here. You've probably seen that they finished paving the portion on Gladys. They're over on, it's actually Hurlbert doing that work now. And they should be beginning to dig up the portion of Main Street, starting at Fifth Street as early as next week. So all of the businesses located and impacted there have all been contacted in person over the past several weeks. So they're aware that that's on the way. Tina Venge Park project's completed. Airport hangar project is moving forward now with the actual hangar construction portion. The I T buildout downstairs is ninety-nine percent complete with furniture having been delivered. The Harkin Rider Center project is continuing to work on ceiling soundproofing and some of those components. The Eotech Barn expansion project has been completed. Also with the ARC, sounds like they're continuing to wait on some windows and some siding issues. And then with the Public Safety Center Phase One, the former port renovation is on schedule. And then the Phase Two portion should start next week. With that, stand for any questions?
Mister Morgan, did I, did I miss it? When you, did you speak about the library and the status of that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have that. That's more for City Manager Smith.
Okay. I know that we've transitioned spaces, right? We're now over at the Carnegie Building.
Yeah, so all of the library operations, well, a portion, I think, like twenty percent of the, the collection has been moved over to the Carnegie Building. So all of the library staff is operating out of there. They're working out of the, the downstairs, as well as all the collection is upstairs. So you can go in there and keep checking out books and, and again.
People can still check books out. They could still come in and visit their library. It's just a more condensed version.
And if you happen to come into a meeting and maybe you see some sparkles or those types of things sitting at your desk, the library staff's also running some of their youth programs and some of those things out of this room during the daytime. So
Okay.
Well, sometimes there might be some youth activities that might have been taking place in here. They try their best to clean up after themselves, but
Glitter.
Very good.
No glitter.
Yep.
Any other questions from the council about the August twenty twenty-four financial report? Any public comment? Can I get a motion to accept the August twenty twenty-four financial report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Barone. That we accept the August twenty twenty-four financial report as presented. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Our committee, city committee and liaison reports on, from anyone? Somebody has a Parks and Rec report. Yes.
Yes. Not, not too eventful, but something that was worth celebrating is the basketball courts are at Harrison Park, and they're being well in use. We had a lights issue that we had to resolve, but that's been taken care of. We've got courts of varying heights, basketball hoops at varying heights, which is great. Some that are even adjustable, getting used all the time by the neighborhood. And then we also have the community yard sale coming up. So that's going to be exciting. And you've got an email, I think we received either today or earlier this week about, about that. So be on the lookout.
When is that?
I just remember that it's coming up.
Saturday? Next Saturday. Two Saturdays from now.
And then also the story walk that we've at Riverfront Park, eight signs, I believe, installed now. Books still waiting on finishing the details with the library on that. But that's, that's in place at Riverfront Park now.
And so is that actually on the park portion, or is it also the Oxbow Trail? Just in the park? Gotcha. Yeah, that's cool. I haven't seen it yet, so I'll have to go down and check it out. Yeah. And did I understand construction on the pickleball area is starting?
Yeah, actually today.
Yeah.
I think there was about fifteen volunteers out to take out some trees, unfortunately, that are in the way. But taking out the trees in preparation to get excavation done starting October seventh. And so we'll see some movement out there.
Thanks to all our Park and Rec volunteers who constantly step forward to help out and make our parks better. So good to see that project moving forward. I heard a fundraising update the other night on that project. I think their goal was six hundred and fifty thousand, and they're like six hundred and thirty or something like that. They're really close. So awesome, awesome project. That'll be a nice addition to the community. Any other committee reports? Nothing? Yes, Counselor Dron?
Well, you guys kind of already discussed the move of the library, which we were excited to hear about. And basically demolition has not begun, is what we heard. They're still fine tuning some detail. And the move went very well. And the staff, the only biggest complaint was that they had to move a little bit, you know, or wait a little bit for kind of things to be able to transition. But other than that, even the staff was really pleased that they didn't have to do as much as they thought for the move because the moving company also helped out a lot. So they were very pleased with that. And we, as the Hispanic Advisory Committee, we did not meet officially as the committee, but we met as a planning for the Hispanic Heritage Celebration that took place on Sunday. So we were able to fine tune a few details to be able to have the event this last Sunday.
Very good. Mister Morgan, when is the expected completion date of the library?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Oh, that's right. That's Mister Smith's detail.
Probably watching from Pittsburgh.
Yeah. He could send us an email, Billy. That's going to be such a beautiful project for the city and a nice addition to our community. I'm just excited to, to see it done, so. Any other committee reports? Anyone? Nope. Okay. Mayor's report, lots going on. You know, as the president of the League of Oregon Cities traveled quite a bit this last couple of weeks, I was in the city of Ashland for our presidential roundtable and city of Malin. So actually drive into California to get into Malin. So some of our best turnouts, though, were in some of the smallest cities. And then just this last week, I was in Gresham with the smallest turnout. So does that make sense? Your largest cities in that district turn out the least compared to your smallest cities. So small cities are hungry for that information. So it's good to see those. And the conversation that we're having revolves around the Revenue Reform Committee and our Revenue Reform Project for this year. We've talked about it briefly here. As a community, we were one of the, you know, one-third of communities across the state that had budget shortfalls over the last couple of years. It's projected that fifty-nine percent of cities in the next couple of years will also have a budget shortfall. So the L C is working on potential looks at revenue reform and what that looks like and what options are palatable. And so we're having those conversations with communities and hearing their struggles, challenges, but also some success stories in some communities on how they've been able to balance their budget and make it all work for their community. So good conversations. I just wanted to say thank you, too, for all the counselors that showed up and participated or potential counselors. Counselor Dron was the only current counselor on stage, but all of the folks that came and spoke the other night. They did a great job. And it's not easy to stand in front of the community and, and speak. And so just wanted to congratulate those folks for showing up and speaking their, their concerns and, and their direction for the city. And they did a great job. I enjoyed listening to it. I wish we had more city participation, more members here from the city. But it was, it was nice to see them all show up. And I wanted to thank them for their willingness to participate, raise their hand, get involved. I got to participate in the Stepping Stones Alliance fundraiser. It was Saturday. I saw Counselor Dron, Counselor Linton, and Council President Primmer there. It was a nice event, their first event. So there was, you know, it's different event. But I think they raised some decent money. And we had some great desserts.
Yes.
At, at the end. I don't know if Counselor Dron, did you get some dessert at the end?
I did not.
It was part of the fundraising. There was some fifty-fifty. There was heads and tails raffle.
Who won and redonated the, the fifty-fifty? Who was that?
I was. I was the fortunate lucky fifty-fifty winner of eight hundred bucks or seven hundred dollars, something like that. Yeah, so.
And donated it back.
Yeah, and I gave it back. It's for a great cause. They're doing good work, and they need the additional resources. So it was a good event. I enjoyed it. And then the next day, we had the Hispanic Heritage Month Event. So I wanted to thank the Hispanic Advisory Committee for putting the event on, some beautiful dancing, some great music. Got this beautiful award from them. So just brought it tonight to show everybody. Thanking me for the dedication and support over the years for HAC, the Hermiston Hispanic Advisory Committee. So it was a nice privilege and honor to be recognized alongside Kathleen Kathly. If you know Kathleen Kathy, she's representative, or Senator Ron Wyden's Eastern Oregon representative. She is also retiring this year. And so they did a recognition for her as well. So it was a nice event, and I appreciate the recognition. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Primmer?
Just, I get, Mister Smith did
Send us a reply.
Send us an email saying that demolition will be starting late October. Expect construction to last one year.
Okay.
So, but yes, I, I too attended both the candidate forum and the Stepping Stones Alliance, and it was a fantastic event. Both of them were actually well done. I was really excited to see all of our candidates get up there and, and say what they had to say. I was, it was, it was an impressive group. And there was there was some, some really good answers. And I, you know, I'm, I'm excited to see those that are going to be coming in and, and well, basically taking over, which is great.
Yeah, I, I think you're going to have some great colleagues to work with.
I do.
Excited for you guys.
I am.
Yeah. How about other council reports? Yeah, Counselor McCarthy?
Just want to remind everyone, I'll put my chamberhead on for a minute, that we received an invite to the ribbon cutting that will be actually at the Chamber of Commerce for Lucky Star Mobile vending, I think, is their, their name. They're normally like a mobile bar sort of service. They were present if you were at the Chamber Mixer this August. And they'll be doing mocktails there. I know a handful of us won't be able to make it because we'll be at the L C Annual Conference in Bend, which I'm also very excited about, since that's also a community I've never been to. So that's coming up, and I'm excited to see what happens.
Good. So David, is this like a truck or trailer that drives around town and sets up shop on a corner?
No, they, no.
No.
They have basically a countertop that they bring out.
Okay.
They may have some other facilities, too, but at least at the Chamber event, they had basically set up beer and wine. Most of the, the beer was all in its own container, obviously, cans and bottles. But they, they poured wine, and they just have that. So if you want a mobile bartender as a service, they have everything you need.
Designed for events or
Yep.
occasions. Great. Congratulations.
And doesn't have to be alcoholic. They can do any sort of beverage.
Certain mocktails, I read, at the Chamber event. And come at lunch and have a mocktail.
Well, I, I think they should have done how Hermiston Taxi did it, where they actually had alcohol at their event, but they were the taxi company. So you could you know, get your, get your ride back.
Any other council reports? Yes, Counselor Dron?
I want to thank again K O H U and the Chamber for putting on the candidate forum. I thought it was great to be able to meet the other candidates. And I, I think we were all pretty nervous since we didn't know what questions were going to be asked, and that was nerve-wracking. I don't know about you, Mister Roberts, or Mister Kelso, how you felt about it, but I know my knees were shaking. But it was a great opportunity for the, not only for us to get to know one another, but for the community, more importantly, to hear some of the ideas or concerns that we share. I believe that maybe if there weren't people here physically. I believe that maybe if there weren't people here physically, but because they were able to watch it through YouTube. That maybe some of our city employees might have been watching it through there too. So I am hoping that that's the case. Anytime I have an opportunity to talk to someone about the candidate forum, I remind them that they can still go back to view that. Because if you go to YouTube and type Hermiston Candidate Forum, you will see previous years. And then this year's candidate forum.
Yeah, that's good to know. So if they didn't make it the other night, they can still go watch it online.
Yes.
Get, get informed. Make it, make an informed vote. All right, yeah, Counselor Barone, you've already had your chance.
Just, I guess an update for me, since last time that we were here in council chambers. Was nine eleven since then. And so it was, as a teacher, a good opportunity to talk to my students a little bit about, you know, how that, how that event was. And you know, what that meant to this country. And so I, I for one, I was a third grader when everything happened. And you know, I, I felt that, that event made me appreciate much more the country. The people who, who fight for this country, who do good for this country. It was a great moment of unity. And so I was able to kind of discuss with my, with my students. Events like that happened in Flight ninety three and, and some of those events that they aren't too familiar with, because I think most people think of the, the terrorist attacks. On, on the World Trade Center, but I think a lot of the kids, especially that didn't live through that, don't really know about the Pentagon or about Flight ninety three. So I think it was just a good message of people that came together for a good common cause in, in Flight ninety three. People from different backgrounds who didn't know each other, who came together to do, to do something very heroic. Very tragic. And so it was just wonderful to share honestly with my students. And just for me, it's, I, I want to share with the council. Because it makes me very, very proud to be an American, quite honestly. And so just wanted to share that and, and a remembrance of that day. And so I'm sure everyone remembers where they were on that day. And so just another. You know, good day of remembrance to, to remember the fallen and the people who did. Who did, you know, the things that needed to be done to, to stand our country up after such a tragedy. So I, I wanted to just share that with the council. And along with that, I was not able to, to be physically present at, at the candidates forum. But I was, as Counselor Dron said, able to, to watch online and honestly kind of rewatch, see how everything went all over again. And so I, I appreciated everybody who participated in the event. I feel like we do have very strong candidates. And so I look forward to, to seeing three new counselors, because I definitely want to see our experienced counselor back up here. On this stage, on this platform again. So I look forward to see three new counselors and a great job to everybody that participated.
What a privilege and honor you get to have in teaching young men and women about the history of United States. And the experiences that you kind of lived through. And it's truly a blessing to be able to share that with, you know, the next generation. So thank you for that as well. In, in your professional career as a teacher, it's a great service to our community. Other comments from the council? David?
I know that Val Hoxsey mentioned this the last time she presented to the council and that the city has a booth at the service fair coming up. But since we don't have a meeting before then, well, another one, that'll be October first, two to six at the community center. I think there's something like thirty or so vendors and organizations that'll be present. And I'll be announcing and emceeing that event and giving reports. So be sure to show up.
Remind me again, that is a Saturday?
No.
No, that's Tuesday, October first.
October.
Two to six at the community center.
Me center and it's volunteer.
Volunteers, public service, access to services you might want, but maybe don't need to volunteer for all the.
For anybody to attend.
Anybody show up.
There'll be food, beverages.
I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, but.
It would be a smart idea.
More about your community and the public service that it does and ways that you could join in and participate, help out.
Or even take advantage of services you didn't know existed.
Find out about other services. Yeah. Good, very good. Mr. Morgan?
Just personally, I got to attend the Packers versus the Raiders this weekend up at the Heroes Sports Plex. Yeah, so fifth grade flag or five year old.
I'm like, and it's home already?
It was incredible. So yeah, kindergarten flag football is awesome. Such. You would find it interesting up there at the, the Heroes Sports Plex. So I mean, it was, the turf was incredible. I think that was the, the feedback. That definitely heard from everybody that was up there. Everybody was really impressed that I talked to, you know, on the sidelines there. Everyone thought it was pretty incredible that there were thousands of cars parked out there just a month ago and the turf was.
Right.
Good, good enough for five year olds to run around.
Pair and rodeo and they were able to play.
I'm not sure who won. Yeah.
That's awesome.
So that's all I got.
So this was your child?
Yep, and Parks Director Arts's child also.
I think the.
Were the opposite teams?
The Packers came away with the victory.
Okay, yeah.
Not that there's any competition.
Unfortunately, my Raiders failed again.
Twice in one weekend. Anything else, Mr. Morgan?
That's all.
Okay, anything else from the council? We're adjourned.
Thank you so much for coming to my rescue.